Right, here we go. Welcome everybody to this meeting of the Audit and Standards Committee which is being held in the Council Chamber at the Town Hall. It's a bit nippy here, so if you see us all reaching for our coats and scarves at any point, it's because we're determined to stay here and do the business and not go home to the warmth. A few housekeeping notes. Please note that social distancing restrictions and other public health safety measures still apply, so please keep your distance from others. Please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting, and if you need to leave your seat, please make sure that you wear a mask. A hand sanitizer is also available for you to use, and it's over there by the door. This meeting is a public meeting and is being livestreamed for the public to view, so can I ask that when you wish to speak, you raise your hand, and when I indicate you can speak, please ensure that your microphone is switched on, and that when you've finished speaking, please switch off your microphone. Toilets are outside on the corridor, ladies to the left, men's to the right. We're not aware of any planned fire alarms, so if it does go, please leave the chamber and make your way back out of the building towards the nearest fire exit, which can be found off the stairwell to the right of the chamber. So we'll now move into a quick introduction. It sounds a bit like one of those games, doesn't it? A quick fire introduction, right, of everybody in the room. So I'm councillor Sean Edmire Richards, and I am the Chair for today's meeting. Simon.
Councillor Simon Clement James, Deputy Chair of this committee.
Councillor Josie Pachek.
David Barker, councillor for Richmond Ward.
Councillor Ben Curran, councillor for Watford.
Councillor Angela Argentio.
Right, so those are the councillors who are actually the members of the committee who will be making any decisions today, and then with, oh, sorry, and our independent member who actually gives us all our independent advice and keeps us in place, Alison Howard, independent member. And we're also supported by a great phalanx of officers here, so if I start with Eugene.
Eugene Walker, Executive Director of Resources, thanks.
Gillian Duckworth, Director of Legal and Governance.
Claire Corneille, Head of HR.
Leon Kaplan, Information Management Officer.
Sarah Green, Senior Information Management Officer.
Linda Hunter, Senior Finance Manager, Intern load it, Risk Management and External Funding.
Claire Sharrock, Senior Finance Manager, Strategic Finance.
David Phillips, Head of Strategic Finance.
I'm just thinking, should you two who've sort of stuck yourself in the back there be sitting at the, is that what we usually do, sitting in the two chairs here? Okay, well, let's not, right. And then, sorry, we've also got Jay Bell here who is taking our minutes, and we also have, sorry, Rachel who is webcasting us and making sure we all get seen. Right, so having done all that, item number two on our agenda is apologies for absence. Do we have any?
Chair, I received apologies from councillor Myman Roof.
Thank you, otherwise we're a full complement. So item three, exclusion of the press and public, I don't believe we have any items which require the exclusion, so that's good. Item four, do we have any declarations of interest? We have none. If anything comes up during the meeting, you know, please do say something if you suddenly realize on page 227 it's your auntie or something. Okay, so we'll move on to item five, which is minutes of the previous meeting. What I will do is go through them for accuracy and then for any matters arising. So for accuracy, page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12, page 13, page 14, page 15, page 16, and page 17. So can we agree those as a true record, please, Simon? Thank you. And now matters arising, page nine, Josie.
I'm a little bit in advance for myself, it's page 11.
Right, well, wait. Page 10. Page 11, is there anybody?
Thank you, Chair. I was at a meeting this morning discussing the complaints procedure and how it's been rolled out in departments, and one of the managers was, because it's predominantly about a culture change rather than process and procedure change, although there are slight process and procedure changes, and they were concerned about the level of take-up of the online training. It only takes about 20 minutes, and they, one of the things that was discussed is whether or not it could be made mandatory given the importance of it.
Can you answer, or Eugene, or somebody?
Yeah, sure, the, so we are, as you know, we have got a programme rolling out training to members of staff who are involved. What we can do is just make sure that that message is out clear to the directors, we can raise it with the directors to make sure it's pushed through. As for mandatory training, we, as you know, we've got, there is a list of mandatory training, and I'm actually, I've got the Head of HR sat at the side of me, so she might have something that she wants to add to this as well, and I'm going to hand over, if that's all right, Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, Gillian. We do have issues with compliance around mandatory training, there are already 14 modules for managers and 11 for staff, so that's a considerable investment. We're looking at introducing further modules around carbon literacy, so we've targeted the intervention here on complaints on those people that will be involved in the management of complaints. So as Gillian says, we can definitely look to drive forward compliance for that group, but we need to seriously think about whether we want to extend that to everybody, bear in mind that the majority of those people may not be getting involved.
Just for clarification, it is about the team leaders and the people that are supposed to be progressing, and the thing about the new policies and procedures is that for the first time there are time limits on it, and it is important that people do comply with those time limits. So as long as everybody that should be progressing something knows they should be progressing it, and knows that the time limits are being monitored, because obviously you can't then chase back through if somebody's not had the training, you can't then criticize them for not meeting the time limits on the complaints procedure. And this is something that's been brought in, not just by Sheffield City Council, but in conjunction with the Ombudsman as well, so just to note that, and I have raised it, and it was quite senior management that were having the discussion this month. So as long as we're all clear that everybody that should be complying with the timescales is aware of the timescales, and to discuss it with a manager for any reason they're not able to. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Josie, for raising it. So we'll just log that and we'll report back, thank you, it is important, thank you.
Okay, and can we actually ask for a report back at some stage that people are actually taking it up, so that we can be clear that the new culture is being embedded? Thank you. Okay, page 12.
Chair, this wasn't this side, sorry, I had something for page 10, but you didn't see me.
Right, sorry, councillor Argentio, page 10.
Yes, point 5.8 on page 10, we agreed last time that we would like to set up a private meeting of members with the auditors, and I understand that it's not possible for this year, but can we embed it so the next year we don't leave it last minute? Because we didn't, you know, we haven't heard anything about it. And also on page 11, regarding the housing ombudsman.
Sorry, which one, page 11, Angela?
6.2, which is also on page 12, 6.10, it's the timescale for the Ombudsman Annual Report for Housing, whether that is coming to us this month or not.
I'll just say that on the first point you raised, our people from Ernst &amp; Young were here, and due to, I'll call it a cock-up between myself and Jay, you didn't get the notice of it, so I take complete responsibility for not having been able to have that meeting, and we will make sure that it does happen in future. My apologies for that, Angela. And then on 6.2, do we know when we're going to get the housing ombudsman's report? I know they said January. Anybody got an idea?
Sorry, no, we'll have to check and get back to you.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have it on, oh, our agenda for next, for the next meeting. Josie.
Thank you, Chair. Just to say that the meeting I thought was had this morning was with housing officers, and they were, they've got the report and they are putting things in place, and that's what they were discussing. So it is, it has been done and it has been progressed, and so they are already taking action on the basis of the Ombudsman report, so it is out there and being done, and action, which just might not have been brought to this committee.
Right, perhaps.
I suppose places with Josie, all right.
Okay, that sounds great. Can I ask that we have it to the next meeting, because that was something that we did ask for previously, and maybe it's so exciting, housing don't want to share it yet. Page 12, Simon, I see that you had asked, oh, it's the same sort of question, isn't it? 6.10, you'd asked about this report as well. So I think if we're all asking for it, it's got to be first item at the next meeting. Page 13, I wanted to ask about the new ways of working with the contact centre, because it's something I think that councillor Argentio and I both raised, about the fact that it was down again last week and people weren't able to report housing repairs, or in fact get through to the council. Can anybody tell us about that?
I think it's best, there's a lot of ongoing work in this area, I think it's best if we just get another update, because there are weekly statistics and a plan in place around that, so if we want to just get something written back to the committee, I think that would be best, because there's a lot of complex issues, and as we discussed at the last meeting, it's not just about the contact centres, it's about the other services that are doing that. So for example, there's been a new system implemented in the repair and maintenance team, which, you know, which is part, well, that's part of, it's all interrelated, so yeah, so, yes, you know, so let us ask Mark to get something written back, yeah, around the committee, yeah.
Okay, so if you can minute that, Jay, that we'd like a report from Mark, please, on that. Page 14, I just wanted to ask on 7.12, that seven experienced customer service staff had gone off to do track and trace and isolate, have they come back yet, or are they still away tracing?
They are at the moment, but we're actually just in a meeting, and that's being reviewed, given wider circumstances and decisions in government, so it should be, yes.
Okay, thank you. Page 15, again, sorry, this is sounding a bit like me talking all the time, what a difference. It was just on 8.5, with suggested training, I actually attended a piece of training online that the local government information unit, LGIU, held, which was for elected members around conflict resolution and staying safe in unsafe places. It was incredibly useful, and I would recommend it for anybody, and maybe we could ask them to do a special one for us at Sheffield. I think conflict resolution is one of the things that councillors find most difficult, I think, at meetings that we go to sometimes with the public, where we meet people who are pretty irate about things, and I now have more things in my armoury, and I'd like to share those with other members. Page 16. And page 17. Right, that completes the minutes and matters arising, thank you, everybody. So our next item is item seven, which is the Statement of Accounts and our Audit Results Report. Would that be you, Dave, to kick it off, or Eugene?
Well, it'll be me, I think, and the auditors obviously will come in to talk about their report. I'll give a sort of short introduction at the start. We're here today to review what is the sort of post-audit Statement of Accounts now. Once approval is given, and the auditors finish their final bits of test, not testing, but bits of reviewing, closing the file, and dotting i's and clotting t's, we're asking for approval from the committee to be given that the Chair and Section 151 officer then sign the accounts, Statement of Accounts and Letter of Representation. The letter covers various representations we make to the auditors, which they need assurances on before they can issue their opinion. You know, just recapping what's happened so far, it's the accounts for financial year closing on 31st of March 21. You approved a draft unaudited set of accounts on 2nd of July, which were published and sent to the auditors on 5th of July, they've been, and to the Audit Committee on 29th of July. The audit's been going on since then, we've kept the committee aware of what's happening, so you're aware of progress so far. There are probably three sort of largest changes to the accounts. One is on Covid grants, where with grants you can either be a principal or an agent, and an agent largely means that money is not yours and you're just holding it for somebody else, akin to a solicitor holding a set of money for a client, and a principal means it runs right through your books. These Covid grants are new, we didn't know quite how they should be treated, and we treated them as agent, and the decision's been taken nationally now that they're treated as principal, so that runs, so it doesn't have any impact on our financial position, but means more entries to run through. We've been, the largest figure in our accounts is probably the housing, council housing valuation, that depends on a housing price index that carries on moving right until now, right until December 21, so we've carried on updating that figure. And again, largest but of no particular impact, property services provide us figures on the valuations, and they picked up very early on in July, an error in their spreadsheet which made a £55 million adjustment. Again, balance sheet figure, doesn't affect, doesn't affect revenue. The auditors will take you through various other things, they've got a list of errors we've adjusted for, errors that we don't need to adjust for, because they're fairly small, and control issues in their accounts, all of which are a useful, a useful read. So that's enough from me, I think there's a flavour of things, unless there's any questions at this stage, I'll invite the auditors to take you through their work in more detail.
Thank you very much, Dave. So can I pass it over to our external auditors, oh, in the corner, to take us through your report, I guess, yeah?
Thanks very much, Chair. So our report's in your supplementary pack, and what I'll do is just give you the headlines from that, and then pass to Hayley to take you through some of the key findings and the adjustments that Dave was just referring to. So on page five of the supplementary pack, you'll see that we set out the status of the audit, and as Dave has already said, you know, we're substantially complete on the work that we need to do. There are a number of areas where we just need to finalize our work, and we anticipate doing that over the course of the rest of this weekend to next week, working with the finance team. And then we'll need to do our stand back and our close-out procedures that we're required to do to get everything onto the file and documented appropriately, as Dave has already explained. So we anticipate on that basis that we will be able to provide an unqualified opinion on your financial statements within the next couple of weeks, subject to satisfactory closing out of those procedures. I'll move past page six, where we talk about, you know, the key findings and audit differences, and as I say, I hand over to Hayley on those in a moment. On page seven, we just talk about our responsibilities under the code for the value for money arrangements. And if you remember, back in our audit plan, that code, those code responsibilities have changed somewhat this year, so whilst we have done our work in that area and have no exceptions to report, in our opinion, on the financial statements, we do, we will be bringing you a commentary at a future meeting, and we anticipate that'll be March meeting, which will set out our key findings around the three domains of governance and financial sustainability and improving the three E's, and actually bring that detailed commentary to you at that point, which will set out, you know, what arrangements you have got in place. So apart from that, it's gone very well, I think we've had great support from the finance function as always, and I'll pass over to Hayley just to take you through some of the key findings and adjustments.
Hayley?
Thank you. So if we start on the, still in the same supplementary pack then, page 10 of our report is focused on our risk of fraud in revenue recognition, and we had attributed that to accounting for Covid grants and then also understatement of other income. As Dave highlighted earlier, the only matter that we wished to draw to your attention on that was just the treatment of the one Covid grant in terms of agency versus principal. Page 13 of our report in relation to property plant and equipment valuations, again, Dave has very kindly done my job for me and talked about both adjustments in that case, so I will move on from that one. Page 14, in relation to the work that we've performed over our investment property valuations. What we've identified this year is that for part of your investment property, there's a proportion of that that the council has the right to use themselves, so that should actually be accounted for as an asset as part of property plant and equipment. Now, that's not a material, it's not a material amount, and we've estimated it somewhere between 1.8 and 3 million in terms of its value, and we've taken the midpoint of that, which is 2.4 million, and included that as an uncorrected misstatement later in our report. It is judgmental, and to Dave's point, minimal impact in terms of the INE and won't impact on the general fund position. In terms of page 15 of our report, we've concluded out our work on the pension liability valuation. There was a misstatement identified in the valuation of the assets within the South Yorkshire Pension Authority financial statements, now because you take a share of that, the impact on your financial statements was 2.6 million to the net position reported in the balance sheet. That also has been included as an uncorrected misstatement later in the report. One thing I did just want to highlight on page 16 of our report was just in relation to PFI, and just to say that you may recall from previous years, we've had some historic errors that were identified in some of the modules, and I'm pleased to report that those have actually all been closed out this year. So if I then move on to page 26 of the report, which sets out the identified audit differences, the majority of these we've talked about or Dave's mentioned, I suppose I did just want to draw to your attention that the current list of uncorrected misstatements that would be reported in the Letter of Representation you would be required to sign off on is set out there on page 26. I think we've discussed all of them, barring the top one, which is just in relation to cut-off around the end of the financial year. What I did just want to highlight in relation to that one is that we do have a line in there called turnaround effect, and effectively what that does is that takes errors that were uncorrected in the previous year and takes into account the impact on the current year's financial statements. So you actually have a reverse impact from cut-off errors that we found in the previous year that nets down that position. I think that was all I was going to comment on at this stage, and clearly happy to take any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? I saw Josie annotating her Statement of Accounts earlier, I don't know if that meant that she was going to ask anything. If not, Simon, were you keen to ask things? Say that again slowly, Simon. Simon's going to ask some questions.
Thank you, Chair. If I can go back to page 16 on the auditor's report, you very briefly mentioned it, I just wanted to understand quite what this error was, whether it was an error that was uncorrected this year, or if it couldn't be corrected this year, or quite how it didn't get corrected in, if you see what I mean.
So the 2.5 million in relation to PFI would have been on last year's uncorrected misstatement schedule, and the decision last year was taken not to adjust at the point in time at which it was identified. It's, I suppose it's just a couple of calculation errors in the PFI model, they're very complex, it's not uncommon to identify them, but it's all been resolved for this year.
Yeah, no, thank you, I was just trying, I was trying if something hadn't been done that needed to be done, but it had been because it couldn't be done, okay, I think I understand, thank you. If I move on to the actual accounts themselves, I've just got a few questions, well, page 65, 65 of the auditors, any numbers I've got, I'm using the old one. We've got a long-term debt to Doncaster Council for, hold on a minute, for a million pounds, I'm just wondering what that was, is? And what's long-term? It's page 65 of the accounts, 89 of the documents, yeah. It's the growing places fund, Dave, which if I start talking and you turn around, but we were effectively the accountable body for, when local enterprise partnerships, LEP, first started, the Mayoral Combined Authority didn't exist, and Sheffield City Council took on accountable body status for the whole of South Yorkshire to process those grants. It was one of the early precursors of grants that have subsequently transferred to the Mayoral Combined Authority. As to why we have still got a debt, I don't know, but that's the background to it. Do we have to follow that up, Dave?
We could, we could look into why it's still, why it's still. Mark, and we could look into why it's still there and has been, has been there this year and last, Simon, but it's a, it's a debt in our, in our balance sheet.
Thank you, I'm trying to get these pages right. Yeah, so page 120, which is 96 of, big letters, yeah, 120 in big letters, and it's, well, it's around the general fund reserves. Over the past 12 months, before that, there's been a lot of things where I've heard the words paid from reserves, paid from reserves, and I can see quite a lot of movement here in those reserves, and what I'd like to understand is where this position is in terms of where we expected to be, where we expect it to be now, if you like, because as I say, it seems to me that, as I say, a lot of, a lot of, over that period, we were going to go reserves, 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 and did that, did much of that crystallize, and what effect has that had on these reserves on this page, thank you.
Shall I start, Eugene, and then if you, if you want to interject? In terms of specifics, the, well, certainly the biggest movement you can spot here is on business rate appeals and that side of things, and there's been Covid grants, and there's been a big movement in our reserves due to Covid grants in the year. We got a load of Covid grants from government just before. We got a load of Covid grants from government just before year end in last year. Had to carry those on a balance sheet and they were then all released during the year. So that affected the total balance quite a lot. You know, we've got to be careful. There's been a lot of talk about reserves, which are actually things this year. And there will be, because we're reporting as at month six, a £35 million deficit this year. If that stays the same at year end, we will have to use reserves to meet that. But that won't affect these figures because these are figures going back a year's time. For members, information when we're in the budget process forward, if we're needing to use reserves to risk base anything, that again, that will have an impact on our reserve position. But that is a moving forward position. The accounts are always, by now, quite a long way back. So they're back as at 31st March 21, when we were sort of in the position of being able to safeguard our reserves. So actually, we do have somebody to help us now.
Yeah, so thank you. Sorry, it was really about that we were planning to use reserves over that 12 months and we didn't? Is that right? We didn't as much as we thought we were?
Yes, sorry. To be clearer, when Covid came in, we were really concerned that we would be not sufficiently funded for all the costs and would have to draw on reserves in 2021 to pay for things. In fact, the government, I think it's been worked out nationally overall, did a pretty fair job at funding local authorities for the short term, I emphasise the short term, cost of Covid. So we didn't have a big hit on reserves in 2021. So reserve didn't go down. That's not the same as this year or probably next year, but certainly was the case for last year.
So I think, I mean, these figures are basically quite out to date now and a lot's happened since. There are a lot of temporary reasons why this went up. And I think as part of the briefing for the budget with Simon, and we've got the COP exec paper next February, in February, and then full council. What we're doing with reserves will form a prominent part of that. And the auditors in here comment on our future financial sustainability. And I think that's something that we really need the kind of more up to date figures in order to be able to have a fully informed view of where we are on reserves now and where they are going forward. Thanks, Ed. It is always a bit after the Lord Mayor's show, isn't it? And so I think, you know, as I just, still trying to get my head around exactly what happened over that year and then we're going forward. And so if I can then move to page, well, big 130, 106. And this is on, well, another big movement in terms of creditors on the adjustment for items for net services. Perhaps give us some background on that.
A question, I wasn't quite sure.
130, it's the movement increase, decrease in creditors from 19,000 to 19 million to 100 million. Page 130.
I was going to say, these are the, you're right, there's a movement in creditors there. These are actually the figures from the cash flow statement. So we have to adjust, our cash position is affected by whether we pay more or less out to creditors in the year and get more or less in from debtors in the year. So we're reconciling here for the movement in cash caused by the change in creditors. You'd have to refer back to the creditors note. I'm going, so I'll have to go forward to the balance sheet and then check the exact page ref to see what's moved within creditors itself. So the balance sheet's page 57 and creditors within that is note 19. So then, sorry, 91, thank you, Angela. So then we go forward to 91 and so the big movement there is the movement in central government bodies. So I would be 90 or 10% certain that's going to be Covid grants again, is it Claire? On business rates relief, yes. So there's a lot of Covid related stuff that's carried on our balance sheet as at 31st of March 21 in there that has inflated our creditors' position that will have drawn down during 21, 22.
Okay, thank you. I saw it to be more business rates or something like that, but that's somewhere else. So if I can then go to hopefully final one, where are we? One of my favourite subjects, Sheffield City Trust. I'm going to guess one, page 112 of big, a little rather, sorry. Little 112 and then, oops, straight past it. Is it worth just explaining, Dave, what happened on business, basically? There were so many on business rates, there were so many business rates cancelled or reliefs given. We basically ended up collecting next to no business rates that year. And the government gave us massive compensation in terms of money to cover for the business rates we would have otherwise collected. So that's kind of, I think that's what's underlying that, that big increase. And Claire's nodding, so yeah. If that helps clarify a bit further. Yeah, thank you. I suspected it was something like that, but as I say, it looked like big movements, just wanted to check. So page 112, large, sorry, large 136, little 112. On the Sheffield City Trust, it's got a note against it saying, note number nine, 18.4 million plus 1.58 million. The 20, well, the payments in the year were 27. something million. Where's the difference? Is that what we were already paying them, as it were?
The difference will be that we have to fund boundary payments which Sheffield City Trust over a period of 11 years that funded the facilities that they built. In addition to that, we will, following Covid, they will have needed revenue support as well. So we've also had to pay them some of that for revenue support. So we've explained the capital transaction there and the remaining part is the funding their deficit, which members will remember other discussions around Sheffield City Trust and us trying to get them to zero subsidy. Not quite getting there, but then Covid making the position understandably much worse since they've obviously had facilities closed, but fixed costs still to cover. So that was why the cost of Sheffield City Trust is so high.
Thank you very much.
And that goes to Josie.
Thank you, Chair. I think a lot of mine have just been covered by Simon and by the audit results report. But just going to small page 29, large number 53, on the housing revenue account. And again, the gross expenditure is quite different there. I just wondered if that's due to lack of repairs being done? Do we know? Because we've got less than half, gross expenditure is less than half of the year before.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Josie. Again, it's probably helpful to look through to the detail and the HRA is right near the back. Covid again? Sorry? Oh, right, it's, yeah, let me just find the exact pages. So if we, if you turn through to, do you want to take that one, Claire?
Hi. If we just go to the HRA page, the actual income and expenditure for the HRA, if anybody's found that page yet, it breaks it down a bit better.
Big 152, sorry, page 152?
152.
The big number?
So there's a better breakdown there. And if you can compare the expenditure headings line by line, you know, the day to day management of the properties, that they are fairly similar. And the big difference between the two years is the depreciation impairment and revaluation losses. So that will be the impact of revaluations on the council house properties. So, you know, not a cash, it's not a cash figure. It's just an accounting figure for revaluations and depreciation.
Would that be actually in the value of the property or the fact that we've had sales? Or would that be shown somewhere differently?
It'll just be movements in the housing price index.
Seems counterintuitive that we're sort of having a hot housing market and the value goes down. It seems strange, but okay. We'll look to that coming back up next year when everybody's buying the houses then. On the same page, which is small 29 and 53, again, the remeasurements of the pension net defined benefit liability. Have we paid back a lot of liability there or is that a revaluation? Do we know?
I mean, I can see if Claire can look up the detail, but the pensions numbers are all numbers that come through from the actuary. And there are a whole series of movements the actuary does every year in terms of working through the liability, which is the amount that we owe out on our pensions. And that will be affected by fluctuations in the stock market, et cetera. So it's a movement, it's something that moves around. What is worth bearing in mind in terms of pensions though, although clearly the value of the fund is very important. And the positive news is that the fund is at the moment more than covers the value of the liabilities. Last time I looked, it was 113% funded, which is very good, given that it's been down at 80, 85% funded for years and years and years. It's actually moved the other way. So that's good in terms of long term cost of the council. And in terms of short term impact, the actuary sets the amount we have to pay for pensions over a three year period. And the next period will come up in a year or so's time. And that cash amount that we physically pay out to the pension fund is the amount that gets charged against council tax. There are then lots and lots and lots of huge, largely impenetrable figures that the actuary tells us for what's happening on the underlying liability. But largely, well, that doesn't at all affect the council's position or council tax. So it's not something to be worried about. You know, what the government tries to do in all these things, and it's the same on some of these movements on council dwellings with depreciation and revaluation things. Those all come into our accounts because that is the correct private sector way of accruals accounting for these things. But they all sort of reverse out and then we get things akin to the amount we need to pay for council tax that actually goes through. So you can see some very scarily big numbers in the accounts. I remember the valuation on council dwellings moving by £500 million one time a few years ago. And suddenly it looked like we were spending £2 billion in the year rather than 1.4 billion. But it had no real impact. It was just the government deciding to devalue council housing as a book figure. So a lot of these things look quite big and scary. But in reality, they're in and out figures and they don't affect council tax and they don't affect our underlying financial sustainability. So the pension figures are very much like that. We're paying a set amount through to the fund every year that's set. And that would go up if the fund was, didn't have enough money to cover its liabilities. At the moment, it does. So, you know, talking about using reserves as you later on, we have a reserve expecting, as we have done for the last 20 years, our pension costs to go up in the future. That might well be a reserve that we can dip into now to cover our financial position this year because it looks like the fund is going to stay overfunded now. So that means we've set a reserve up prudently, expecting a cost to go up. It looks like it won't, so we can use it. So it's an interesting strand through to previous questions here. I've talked for far too long.
And as a risk evaluation being done on that, given obviously a lot of the valuation of the pension fund is on share prices and a lot of share prices have been hit because of Covid. So as a risk evaluation being done, will the share prices be back to look as though they're good for funding the fund by the time the actuarially valuation's done? Or is there a risk that the shares will be much lower in value?
That's a great question. There is always a risk that the market will move the other way. So the position has changed really quite quickly from underfunded to overfunded. And what that tells all of us is it could equally move quite quickly from overfunded to underfunded again. So we're certainly not going to be looking to use, you know, all the stuff we've got set aside for pensions. But at the moment, it's been positively funded for a couple of years now. Despite Covid, it's still showing us positively funded. The actuary is going to start using the figures round about March this year to do valuations during the year to set our payments for the following three years. So unless things go badly quite quickly now, we should be okay for the following three years. 12 months ago, I would have said the fund's looking positive, but it's quite a long way from the next valuation. So I wouldn't recommend touching anything in that reserve. I think as we get nearer and nearer to the date when the next valuation comes through, it is more reasonable on a risk basis to use some of it. But every time you use a reserve, one, you can't replace it. And two, you're effectively taking a bit more risk because you've got less continuity in your balance sheet. So you're absolutely right to highlight those factors.
Thank you. Again, small page 30, large.
Another bit of information if you want, because actually going about stock markets, the pension fund does invest abroad as well. It's not just about our stock market. And, you know, one of the things that has continually affected and positively, interestingly, so the devaluation of the pound makes all the foreign investments more valuable. And that's been a significant contributor to the pension fund getting better. It's a bizarre consequence of Brexit.
Good news, bad news, yeah. Thank you. Again, going on to page 30 and small 30, big 54. And it's about reserves because obviously reserves are going to be becoming increasingly under pressure. And it's the risk versus the reserves. So you've sort of got those headlines reserves. Where does the sort of climate warming risk come into the reserves for increased flooding and various things like that? Or if we have sort of rough land fires or something? Because if we have a drought in the summer, is that built in somewhere in these reserves?
I don't think we have a specific climate change reserve. What we do have, we have a series of reserves set aside for things. And then we have our remaining, what we call our on air marked general fund balance, which has stayed at around about 3% revenue, 13.3 million pounds or so for as long as I can remember. That was a reserve that we used back in 2007 when we had flooding and had a lot of flooding costs. So in the first instance, we would use that. It is really worth emphasising, and we had to do then, if we spend that, we have to build that back up to around about 3% of revenue because that is the minimum assessed level we can use. So it's not a long term get out of jail free card. But if we had another round of flooding in the first instance, we use that. I do know we have, for example, a sort of a winter maintenance stroke, severe winter reserve, which is several million pounds, which is, we tend to put a million pounds a year into that when the winter isn't bad. And that's for doing a lot more gritting when the winter is bad. So we've got that as a specific separate one. I don't think we've got a specific flooding reserve there, but the on air marked reserve can be used to cover that.
Thank you. I think the cash flow statement was covered by Simon's questions. And the only other thing is on the grant income. I mean, yes, we've had the Covid one and we've also got these grants. Again, it's just asking the question, well, it's great to get the grants. It's just making sure we're monitoring the grants and that all the signposts along the way are getting hit and the information's there. Because clearly if you get a grant and you don't, it's all those likely to be penalties and money's paid back that you've already spent. So again, it's just to check that we've still got a robust monitoring system for grants.
We do. And it's worth saying that when Support for Businesses first came out, we were really quite careful and went through a whole series of checks when we were paying them out, despite the government saying, no, 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 just pay these. And publishing league tables that showed that other cities were paying them quicker than us. Lo and behold, nine and 12 months later, they've come along and done a load of audits of people who've paid those out and told people off who paid them out too quickly. And we had a very, very low error rate in that government audit because we took our time to do it properly at the time. And we knew full well that when the government says, just pay it out, don't worry about controls, they don't actually mean that. They mean that down the line, they will expect us to have put a load of controls in place, which they did. So we've been the right side of those controls. As and when we have a risk management report though, you know, one of the risks we've got on our risk register is the risk that we miss pay Covid grants because we've had a lot of money and been told to pay it out very quickly. And in some cases, actually been told to pay it out before we could run it through our council governance processes. Jill, has a series of processes we should follow when we accept grants to take them to members and things. It's just been not possible always to jump through all the necessary hoops on that because they've come in. We've literally had money come into the bank account before we've been told it's coming at times, whereas we should accept it all first. So there is a series of pressures there. And we do have a risk in our risk register around grants and the dangers that we inadvertently trip up on that. But we are very well aware of the risk.
Okay. That's thank you for the offices and thank you, Chair. All right, thank you, you two, for your hard questions. Oh, my goodness me, here we go. Angela.
Well, Councilor Patrick has asked the two questions I wanted to ask on the incoming expenditure statement. So I just would like a clarification on note thirty four that is on the reserves. I think Councilor Grant Jones asked the question, but I think I was on the wrong page and I couldn't see the numbers. So could you clarify, Dave, about the other year mark revenue reserves? Because those have gone up. Is that where the Covid grants that were carried forward? Or did I misunderstand that?
No, you understand that correctly.
Thank you.
Ben, did you? Oh, right. Very nicely done. Okay, well, thank you all very much for your contributions and particularly from our external auditors. And I'm frantically looking here. Is there actually a recommendation that I should be reading out to everybody at this moment? Or are we just saying we're going to note all this and thank you very much? We don't have to sign it now, do we?
The follow up is it gets signed, doesn't it, Dave? When's the signing ceremony?
When our external colleagues tell us they've finished their work entirely, then we will be saying please to Sean Ed and Eugene, can you sign the accounts on the letter of rep? So the recommendation to this committee is to give delegated authority to the Chair to sign the accounts on the letter of rep on their behalf. And we should do that. I think the auditors have said by the end of the month. But I'll let them correct that if I'm, or very early next month. Very early next month, I'm getting some nodding on for that. So the recommendation is that the committee notes the report and delegates authority to sign the accounts.
Angela.
I know that the auditor are saying that they don't expect any changes or anything on towards up. But what happens if there are any problems? Do we reconvene to agree to the accounts?
So what we would typically do in a delegated authority or approval situation is update our final audit results report and share that with the Chair of the Audit Committee and with Eugene to say this is the conclusion of the audit now. So we've updated the reports to show everywhere that we've concluded the word. What we would suggest, even if there's nothing coming out, is that we perhaps have a call with the Chair of the Audit Committee so that she can ask any questions on your behalf. If anything does arise between now and approval of the accounts that is significant, then we would discuss that with Eugene and the Chair and then make a determination as to whether or not that needs to come back to the whole committee before, because it would probably undermine the delegation.
Content with that, Angela. Thank you. Good question. The recommendations we've noted, we've thanked, and you have to give me approval to sign these at the appropriate time. Is that agreed? Right. Stunned silence. Thank you all very much for that. And if you two want to be going because you have buses, trains, aeroplanes to catch, and we'll see you in March, is it?
Yes, thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. And now we move on to item eight, which is another of your sort of packs of papers. We've had three lumps of papers and this is. Thank you, Eugene. So item eight is the Information Governance Annual Report. And Sarah is going to speak to us on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Data compliance remains a key priority for the council. We're now in the third financial year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one was the third financial year of what is now called the UK GDPR, GDPR at that time, and the Data Protection Act. And the council's working really hard to ensure compliance through a number of frameworks and the UK GDPR Action Plan. I'm happy to go through some of the headlines with you. That's absolutely fine. So the first one, subject access requests. So you can see in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one that we handled three hundred and twenty six subject access requests and we answered one hundred and seventy of those in time. That is a drop to fifty-two percent from where we were the previous year, eighty-five percent. And this drop really was caused by the pandemic. A freedom of information request, similar twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, we received one thousand five hundred and forty-three requests, of which we answered just over sixty-four percent on time. So again, we've had a drop from where we were the previous year, just over ninety-three percent. The target rate for the Information Governance Board for freedom of information requests rests at ninety-five percent. So unfortunately, we were below that, but we are making up for that this year.
Can I ask if we've ever hit it? Because we said that previously it was ninety-three point two five. Have we ever hit ninety-five?
I'm not aware that we have. Leon, would you know?
We haven't, Chair. And not in the last five years.
Can I ask what the impact of non-compliance is?
Yeah, non-compliance has quite a number of issues, I suppose. You could call them for the council. One of them being trust, another one being fines, ICO inspections. I can't think of any more at the top of my head.
And due to the fact that we haven't hit the figures this time, and you mentioned fines, is there going to be a significant financial impact?
No, I don't believe so. We're working very hard to bring up our compliance rate. I think everybody's very aware of the impact that Covid has had on governance of freedom of information requests. I'm hoping that the work that's being done will evidence that we've taken it very seriously. So far, the ICO have been happy with what we've put in place. Yeah.
Gillian.
Thank you, Chair. Just to add to that, we, myself and Sarah, I think you were around at the time, weren't you? Mike Weston had a call with the ICO. So we actually proactively contacted the ICO and had a conversation with them because we were aware of the, it was the, following on from the impact of the pandemic and the lockdown, particularly when we diverted staff from supporting the information management onto frontline. So we'd had a conversation with the ICO and they were supportive whilst we, to give us some time to try and correct that. And Sarah's done a fantastic job. Sarah's only been in post since August. And she's done a fantastic job to get our FOI levels, response levels back up. We, so the ICO are quite, are okay for now on freedom of information. What we're less comfortable with is the subject access requests. And I'm sure Sarah will perhaps mention that going forward. But that's an area that we still need to focus on.
Continue, Sarah.
Yeah. Our compliance rate for the last three months is over ninety percent. So it's ninety point eight eight percent. So you can see that we are steadily increasing our compliance rate. We've put systems in place to address freedom of information requests, better monitoring of those, better IT systems to support us with those. So I'm pretty confident that we, you know, we've come out the other side of the impact of Covid and we're on the right side now and looking up. So as Gillian said, there's a little bit more work involved in bringing that response rate up to a suitable level. Work is taking place on subject access request responses. And resource has been put in place really to focus on those. Teams understand the importance of those request times and are working incredibly hard to address them. The other thing I was going to mention was information security. And just to really let you know that we are working very hard on something called sensitivity labels. And I'm sure any of you that's using email at the moment knows all about sensitivity labels. Really, this is just to support us with the framework to manage our information better and to ensure its security. And that's an ongoing programme of IT changes that we're putting in place to support us with that. I was just going to talk a little bit about information security breaches. So that's on page two two seven. You can see that in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, two hundred and sixty-two security incidents were logged with our information security incident process, which is now an automated process. Most of those breaches involved personal data and they were caused by human error. We're working incredibly hard to train staff on the importance of responsibility, on the importance of protecting data. And I can move on to talk about our training that we have in place. We've got quite a number of information governance training modules available for staff. However, I think the most important one is our information governance training, which is compulsory for staff to take. They do that yearly. So when they first arrive as a new member of staff, they take that and then that's logged and they do that yearly. As of last month, eighty-eight point nine eight percent of council staff had completed the module. And I know, having looked at recent figures, that's just, that's gone up a little bit as well recently. And ninety-six percent of social care staff had completed the training in time for us to submit the toolkit. We've recently updated the training as well. And I'm hoping that we will see even more compliance with that. We're going to have a better system in place to monitor that, to update it as well. Thank you. I don't know if anybody's got any questions.
Oh. I'm going to start with Angela.
Just a very quick one, Sarah, if you don't mind. Is some of the, I was just looking at the figures in Appendix A in terms of the subject access requests and the performance not having improved as much as the FOI request? Is it partly to do with staff being put on other duty during the year and so being less well resourced? Is that one of the reasons why we can't catch up?
Yeah, it was a little bit before my time. As Gillian mentioned, I started in August. But my understanding is that staff were redeployed during the pandemic to support other areas of the council's work. And so, of course, that's going to have a knock on effect to responding in time. They're all back to normal duties now and picking up that work and working through it.
Thank you. David.
Just a couple of quick things. Firstly, homeworking, I wonder how that's impacted on your information security? I suspect it's had a fair impact. And the other one's just around FOIs where you're almost entirely reliant on other people to achieve your targets. And I just wonder if those other people give this the priority you'd expect them to? And if not, are we doing anything about that?
Yeah, I would say that homeworking has had its challenges because it was just so immediate. You know, people were working in the office one day and suddenly home and working the next day. I think the IT team did a sterling job in setting everybody up. The networks were secure, so I wouldn't have any concerns about that. I think that there were an increase in training and awareness to remind staff of the importance when they're working from home. So, you know, make sure that you lock your laptop down, make sure, you know, you haven't got other family members in the room if you're in a meeting or if you've got your work notes out. So it was about being, you know, engaged with your working environment and understanding that you were working somewhere differently and you had to be a little bit more aware. So I would say that, I would say it's been a success to the point that I think we will continue this kind of hybrid working where we work a little bit from home, we work a little bit in the office. It is working for the council. And I've got no concerns about the security of people working from home. And your second question.
That was just around freedom of information and whether the people you rely on to provide you with that information give it the priority you think they should. And if not, whether we should be doing something about that.
That's a really good question. I think people are becoming more aware and more alert to the fact that when a data subject requests information, that we have a duty to respond to them in a timely manner and to recognise what a request is. That if they get an email saying something, you know, they recognise that that is a request for information and they understand then what they need to do with that. So it's actioned and it's actioned within the timeframe. I would say that as we progress each year, that that is becoming more second nature to members of staff, that they understand what they're looking at. I'm confident that with training as well, we're doing our yearly training, our refresher courses. And as members know, we're rolling out at the moment FOI training for members, which I'm hoping you'll all join us for, that that will support us as well in improving our compliance rates. Thank you.
I just wanted to ask under, I think it was, where are we? On page two hundred and thirty-four, when we've got, I think, the breaches which were investigated by the ICO and several of them say closed the case and made several recommendations. Are those recommendations we then, peculiar, if you like, to each complaint? Or are they ones which will then go into general practice?
Apologies. Yeah, some of them are very generic. So it could be something like, please ensure your staff refresh on their data protection training. And that's really important that that is carried through. And I, you know, ensure that's carried through because whilst it sounds a bit generic, it is important that people do that training. Other ones could be relevant to that specific incident that's happened. I'm happy, I've pulled up a few, so I'm happy there's quite a number of them, recommendations. It could be things like reviewing your policies, your procedures, making sure your electronic devices are secure. You know, don't, you know, put your proper password in or make a stronger password, things like that. You know, don't leave your paper with personal data lying around. Keep it secure. So a lot of them tend to be those generic ones. I can certainly spend a few minutes with you and look through each case and give you an idea of. you an idea of, of, you know, more specific recommendations. But I think what I'd, what I'd like you to understand is that at the council, those recommendations aren't just brushed aside. Oh lovely, we're, we're, you know, we're sorted, let's move on to the next thing. They're reviewed, they're checked, they're audited, you know, are you actually doing this? I'm meeting with people when they get, you know, an ICO recommendation. Have you implemented this? Great, how's it going? What's the progress? You know, what, what do you think you'll do next to make sure this isn't happening again? So I think, you know, that's important that they are understood and recognised as important.
Thank you, that was really comprehensive. Do we have any other questions? Oh, Ben?
Sorry, it's quite minor, so I was wondering whether I should actually ask it or not. But I guess what I don't fully get is, so we monitor things like the number of breaches with information security, they don't quite always get the impact of that. So one breach that affects 500 people counts as one. So for example, there was the issue with allotments where allotment holders got a debt, a debt collection demand by error instead of their annual bill or whatever it was, something to that effect. That would count as one incident, wouldn't it? Whereas in effect, that went to hundreds of people. So the impact was bigger than one incident might, might suggest. So it's, it's more just a point for future, if we could maybe have a, a metric that might show the nature of the impact of, of, at least the key incidents, whether it be the, whether that be financial or whether it be large numbers of people. Because if you've got 262 and they affect one person each, that's quite different to a number that would have a, a much larger effect.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all. I'm, I'm happy to, to look through anything in the report and revise for next year. What I would say on our quest to, to integrate, integrate more IT and more modern ways of working, we've got a great new system that we're using now to report our security incidents. And so I can really drill down on that and understand. And that, I think that goes back to the question about recommendations. I'm able to properly understand what's going on, what portfolio is this affecting? Is this happening often? You know, what are the trends that are going on here? So I'm absolutely happy to bring that back to, to, for next year. That's not a problem.
Right, we'll all have to make sure we're back on this committee next year now, so that we'll know what you've done. Can I just say thank you very much, both to you and to Leon for coming? I think that's, that's been incredibly useful. I certainly hold my head in shame and say, I wasn't aware that we were supposed to be doing FOI training as members. And it's something I shall look up tomorrow so that I can make sure that I do it. And I certainly am sure that all of our committee members will want to lead by example on this. So thank you very much. So agenda item number nine, and this is you Gillian, I think, on whistleblowing.
Thank you, Claire's come along to present the, Claire, Claire Cornet, Head of HR, thank you. Thanks, Gillian, thank you. And so the report that you've got in front of you today is providing an update on where we are with whistleblowing and our policy. We've reviewed the policy itself and we deem it to continue to be fit for purpose, although there have been a few minor amendments listing the details of the names of people to contact if you want to report a whistleblowing incident. We've provided some statistics around the use of this policy, which we've taken a dataset from April 2018, which is when the committee had the last report. So it has been a while since I believe it's been discussed here. And in that period of three years, however, just short of three years, just four years, sorry, there has only been five reports of whistleblowing, which is relatively low for an organisation of our size and our complexity, which is why the primary focus of the report is to look at how we can address that and really promote the use of whistleblowing. We do know that we have other instances of cases that people use other mechanisms to report, such as dignity and respect and allegations of, of inappropriate behaviour that they don't use the whistleblowing policy and to report through. So we want to put a targeted approach together whereby we promote our whistleblowing policy, promote the ways in which people can report it. We're increasing our capacity to be able to report it through the increased use of contact officers. So when we introduced contact officers, historically we appointed seven people alongside seven whistleblowing champions, so 14 people in total. We only have now five contact officers. And when we've spoken to them recently, they are very conscious that they are not actively promoting their role as contact officers and they would, they've asked for some support to do that. To increase the visibility of this policy and hope therefore, I know it sounds perverse that we're wanting people to whistleblow, but it's the right thing that people do. And to increase the opportunity for people to, to use this policy, our targeted approach is going to be through the use of posters, emails, everything that you can think of. We're going to throw the kitchen sink at this. We're going to be sending communications out to managers, encouraging people to use PDR conversations, to, to encourage people to volunteer. It's a voluntary role on top of somebody's day job. So there would be a release of time for them to be involved and there would be a release of time for them to be trained. It's very important that we train contact officers appropriately and that they've got the support mechanism through HR so that they're able to deal with the queries that come in. There has been hesitancy across that the contact officers to continue because they feel that training has been inadequate. We need to be upfront about that and, and address their concerns. And so the recruitment campaign, we're due to start, to coincide with the return to the workplace. Bearing in mind that we have a significant proportion of the workforce not using office space at the moment, using, being in depots, et cetera. We want to maximise that opportunity to really promote this and make sure we've got everything aligned to that, that, that we then get the right number of people applying. We will not be limiting the number of contact officers. Clearly if we get a thousand, we'll have to think again, but we're expecting to get no more than 20, 30 people volunteering to, to take on this role. And we feel that that would be an appropriate number to, to train. But we're not going to limit it, we're not going to set a target on it. We're just going to see what happens as part of the recruitment campaign. If we don't get sufficient, we'll continue to market this and continue to encourage people to, to, to join the programme. The contact officers, as I say, we had seven originally, five. We're not expecting any of them to continue, is what we're being told. So we do need to think about increasing that number with not relying on those, those five people. So the purpose of the paper today is to ask you to note those plans, note the five cases. There's an appendices in there that gives you more details. It is anonymised and clearly I can't answer any questions that go into the detail around the individual cases, but it will give you a feel for the nature of the, the cases that we've had historically over those near four years.
Thank you, Claire. Angela?
Thank you, Claire, for that. If an employee doesn't, for whatever reason, doesn't want to use a contact advisor, say because there is not, none that are near to them, what's the procedure to whistleblow? That would be interesting for us to see. And my second question is on the appendix, so appendix one. So there is one case at the very bottom. And I, I'm really not interested in the case per se, but just in terms of timeframe, when there is an incident, how long does it take and are the targets, you know, we need to sort, sort this out by? And obviously this one is still ongoing, why is it still ongoing? Thank you.
Thank you. So the, the whistleblowing policy enables you to report whistleblowing to a range of different people. The primary contact could be your line manager, your manager's manager, or anybody within the management chain, contact officers. There is also whistleblowing champions, of which we've got seven. We've just updated that list as part of, a part of a review. And those people are still on that list. We will have to update it again because we have a couple of people on that list that will be leaving the organisation through the voluntary severance and voluntary redundancy scheme. But there's a whole range of different communities that you could contact. We're also talking to our newly created networks. So we're along the lines of the Equality, Diversity and Inclusion Agenda. We've been really promoting the use of representative groups. And we've got a Race Equality Network, used to be called our Race Safe Space. We have a Disability Confident Forum. And again, we're talking to those groups around whether they would also be prepared to, to acknowledge receipt of, of whistleblowing claims. I'm very confident that they would, we just need to ensure that they know what to do with them and when they receive them and the difference between a, an allegation of something happening and a claim of whistleblowing, which are two very different things. The timeframes is a really interesting one. And unfortunately, no two cases are the same. It all depends on the complexity of the investigation. It's whether the police are involved, for example, the nature of the allegation can mean that there are different things that we need to do. I have looked at this particular case because I do have concerns about it being open and from the first of, of August and we're now nearly into, into February. There are a number of factors. There is no agreed timeline. I am confident that this allegation will be resolved by the end of this month. And I have asked that, I am alerted if it is not with a real reason as to why not. The, the reasons I can give you Angela is that we had an investigator that we had to change because of some conflict of interest. And we had the pandemic in the sense of people not being available due to ill health and being affected by that. We also had, we also have trade unions who are very supportive of this process but are very keen to hold meetings that are face to face. And obviously when you're dealing with a pandemic and the opportunity to do that, it has been quite limited. And that has impacted on this particular case that you're referring to at the bottom line.
Thank you, Chair. I am mindful that this is five cases over 31 months, so it's over quite a period of time. I'm just wondering because they are all from the people portfolio and if, if, is it a sign of a more underlying problem? Or is it just that people in the people portfolio are more comfortable in whistleblowing? Because even though you've got a whistleblowing policy, it's how comfortable are people to whistleblow? And I just wonder, it's difficult because you're down to five people who are inactive and you've got a pandemic and people are working at a distance. So that would make things different. I just think going forward as a suggestion that if they continue to be in one portfolio is to look and see if there's an underlying problem. And also why aren't, I'm not saying that there's automatically a problem in other areas, but is there anything that should be coming forward that's not coming forward in the other portfolios? Thank you.
I, I think that's a really helpful observation, Josie, thank you. I don't really understand why they're all from the people portfolio and I, and I haven't looked into why they are in there. I have looked at where the current contact officers are that no longer want to, to participate. They're all in the, in the place portfolio. So there, there's no correlation between the two which I've been able to identify. Our ambition is to really look at making sure that moving forward, we have representation that we can promote across all portfolios. So we're not having all of our contact officers in one. That will hopefully then prompt people to feel comfortable going to people that they may know and be less anxious about raising their concerns. I think also it, it goes back to the point that I made as part of what I was talking about. There are other mechanisms for people to raise their concerns. And I think if we look at the other portfolios, there is a real cross section across all portfolios where people are raising dignity and respect and other forms of allegations where they could have used whistleblowing if they'd have taken it one step further. And it's that balance that we need to factor into the communications of, of what do we mean by whistleblowing and, and where do we draw that line?
Thank you for that. And, and I do note what you're saying. And some people might feel comfortable talking to somebody that they know, but depending on what it is they want to whistleblow, they could equally feel more comfortable talking to somebody not known to them or not within their workspace. So it's just making sure that they know that they don't have to go, a people person doesn't have to go to a people portfolio. And similarly, a place person, excuse my bike, doesn't have to go to one in their own portfolio. They could go to somewhere else. Thank you. I had some questions too. I wanted to know the relationship of whistleblowing with our trade unions. I'm assuming that they are supportive of the policy and how you work between you if, if somebody whistleblows through the union to make sure that everything has a similar trajectory. Where do the support people come from? Is it, do you have to be at a particular level in the organisation to be one? And do we also have people in the blue collar parts of our organisation who also take part? And finally, what support do we give to whistleblowers? Because finding somebody to whistleblow to is fine and then all the, all that happens afterwards is all a bit hard. So what support do we give there?
Okay, thank you. Trade unions are very supportive of this, of this policy. Indeed, all of our policies are actually created in partnership with the trade unions. So when we undertook the review of this policy, it was in partnership with them. And we talked, we talk at our local negotiation committee around those policies. They are there to also, I'm jumping onto your, your third question if I may, because they're also one of the main points of contact for the whistleblower. And they are one of the mechanisms that support those individuals along with the individual's line manager if they're not involved in the actual allegation, et cetera. Or other nominated people can be identified. We try and keep it outside of the, any HR process because obviously we're there to support management in the context of that and it, it avoids conflict. So we would look to the support for the individual to come from within either the business or their trade union or any other representative that they feel is appropriate. So, sorry, I've answered one and three there. And in the sense of who, anybody. Technically, I would want them to have the right attributes and the right ability to be able to deal with some of those allegations. Sometimes there can be lots of emotion around those. So it's about having that strong personality where, or we can develop that personality trait where they can then be able to, to manage that. It's quite a, it, it's quite a unique position to be in where somebody's sharing with you their lived experience, their personal experience, the impact that that has had on them. And that can therefore impact on the person that's receiving that information. But when it comes to the grade of them, which part of the organisation they're in, that is totally irrelevant to some extent. And to be fair, you know, we've got some, some people that you would class in, in, in the lower grades that are probably better than some of the colleagues in the senior grade because they'll jump to wanting to solve the problem and head it off at the past rather than really listening to the individual. And it's those types of skills that we're looking for, not the seniority of, of the position. And I did look at the, the five contact offices that are currently in place but will not be. Four of them are in the place portfolio, mix of grades, but predominantly between grade six and grade eight. So again, our targeted communication needs to be very clear. It's for everybody, anybody. These are the attributes that we're looking for. These are the things that you might experience. Do you fancy it? Talk to your line manager about whether they feel it would be a good move for you.
In that case, can we agree the recommendations? I think we shouldn't just note it, we should encourage it and say we, you know, if we can help support anything with your publicising or your plans for getting contact advisors, please ask. Okay? Thank you very much. Thank you, Claire.
Could I just suggest that Claire, Sarah and Leon are allowed to, to leave now? If they wish to, they may wish to stay.
I, I think they probably want to stay because audit is such a riveting committee. But if they do wish to go, they can. I'd, I'd stay because it's Linda Hunter next. We're now going on to item 10, which is progress on no assurance, limited assurance, high organisational impact, opinion audit reports. Linda?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, this is the report that I bring to this committee every six months. And like the Chair's just said, it's, it's given you an outline of the recommendations that are outstanding for our, our no assurance reports and limited assurance reports with high impact. The key points on it and some positive feedback, there are five reports listed in this, in this, this document to actually remove because all the recommendations have now been implemented. We've added one new report and that's relating to the adult safeguarding. That has been issued as a limited and high impact. And the details of that one will be in the next report that I bring to you back in June because the recommendation, the implementation dates haven't, haven't hit the deadline yet. dates haven't, haven't hit the deadline yet. In this report, it's got 34 recommendations that we're tracking, 23 have been implemented, so that's 68% and 11 are ongoing. So that's some quite positive news there. We've still got one critical recommendation outstanding that relates to the OMS, which is the housing management system. That was, the recommendation was around grading the system, graded the system now. But the feedback I've got back is that it's got limited functionality, so the improvements haven't been made. So what they need to do now is to test and rebuild a new system. So that is why the timeline on that is, is quite lengthy. I did take this report to the Performance and Delivery Board back in November and what they requested for that critical recommendation was they wanted to do what they called a deep dive exercise. So what they wanted to look at, you know, what, what is the problem here? Is it staff resources, investment, is it change management? You know, they want to do a good, a good review of this, this outstanding recommendation and also lessons learnt because obviously it is taking time for them to implement this. The other feedback I got from the board was, and within the people portfolio now they've got a recommendation tracker that's on SharePoint, they've got that in place now that's been running, so that's similar to the place portfolio. So that should help them be able to track their recommendations. And then they also acknowledged that obviously there is a risk here. If the recommendations aren't implemented, then that, that is a risk to the organisation. So they highlighted that. So on the last page, what I'm asking the committee to do is to note the content of the report, but also agree the removal of those five, those five reports listed there. There's the enforcement agent review, appointeeship service review, the council processes for managing investigations, controls in the town hall and the data security protection toolkit. Those are all the five that we can remove now because all the recommendations have been implemented. So has anybody got any questions on that report?
Thank you Linda. On, on the, on the table itself, on page 257, sorry, 53, the implementation time for incident management report etcetera, has that been done by, because obviously there was a timescale put there, has that been completed now by the 31st of December? Because obviously this went in November, so...
Yeah, and the meeting was delayed, yeah.
Yeah, so is that completed now?
Yeah, I can actually, Sarah's actually stayed on for this, for this, yeah. So there has been progress and Sarah can give you an update on this one if that's all right.
And there are quite a few of those dates for December, obviously on that report. And also on page 255, it says a revised implementation, ongoing three-year transformation plan. When is the start date of those three years so that we can work out what the end date is?
Right, do you want me to answer the first? The one that you've just raised on the page 253, the start date of that three-year plan was from the November 21 when, when the officers gave me that update. So the three years are from November 21. So that's for that one and Sarah can answer the one on information security. Thank you.
Hi, yes, so as you can see, the original implementation date for this was December 2019 and that's, that's rolled forward quite a bit. I think the main reason for that has been because of Covid, we've been concentrating on other things. One of my biggest tasks when I joined in August was, was to get us back on track with things and one of those was reporting information security incidents. What I would say is that since this was started in, I'm assuming at some point in 2019, we've progressed with technology and so now what we've implemented is ServiceNow, which is a ticketing system. So we implemented that before my revised implementation timeframe, which was the end of December, so that's already in place now. So if you were to raise a security incident, you would raise it through IT, through the ticketing system and that would come through to us. So we're on it with that and, and I'm pleased that that's working. We've had a few weeks now to embed that and, and that's, that's doing well. The second part now of, of that ticket is for us to work with IT on phase two, which is to start drilling down and understanding the analysis. So at the moment I can have some basic reports and analysis, I think I mentioned to Ben earlier a little bit about those. So that's really good, that's, that's, that's a progress forward. What we'd like to do with that then is, is to forward that on IGWG to information asset owners to review what the mitigation procedures we've put in place and our recommendations and then that gets a sign off. So really in effect, you're doing a full circle with that and that goes back to what I was saying earlier about not just having recommendations in place, but to have some scrutiny of those recommendations, that they've actually been, you know, fulfilled and actioned. Our IGWG working, the working group, Information Governance Working Group is coming up. So the first one for this quarter is, is coming up at the end of January and that's where we're going to take this report and, and just make sure that everybody's on board with the new way that we're going to be doing things. Because as I said, the, the system that was put in place in 2019, it was very paper orientated. We've, we've moved at the times, we've moved with technology and we'd like to do this in, in this ticketing service, ticketing system in a much more secure way. And that then, that then means that on my dashboard, I can see the progress of that and make sure that things are being implemented. Does, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Page 257, there is another date, end of January. So are we on track with that? Because obviously today is the 20th. It's 4.1 in the direct payment section.
Yeah, I've asked for an update, but I haven't had the update in time for this meeting. So what I'll have to do, I can, I'll chase the update and then I can email around all the members, yeah. So that's 4.1 of the direct payments.
I've got some questions and I, I think I've said to you Linda, that when I actually looked at the proposals around the, the housing repairs and etcetera system, my response was, ah, because this was something which I believe has been ongoing since 2018 and we're now looking at perhaps September 2023 to actually sort this out. And that's, well, I think it's appalling and I don't know whether, just as a laywoman, that is appalling or whether that is how long these things take. I rather suspect it isn't. And I think the fact that people can keep saying, well, we'll put it back and we'll look at whether we should just do nothing or whether we ought to start to rebuild etcetera. Sorry, I look as if I'm shooting the messenger and I'm certainly not intending to. But when we know that sort of our housing repairs and response and everything has been so rotten, how come this is, you know, you said there's going to be a deep dive into it now. How long does a deep dive take and when will we get the result of that particular dive?
Yeah, I think that was the frustration when I took it to the Performance and Delivery Board, it highlighted that it's been outstanding for a while now. So it's on the agenda for, well, it was on this, this January's agenda, but they've had to push it back now because of other things with the Covid and Plan B. But they've got it on the agenda now for the 8th of March and that's where the project lead is going to take it and explain, you know, what's happening with the project and the delays and the timelines. So that is where they'll get challenged and ask questions at that meeting. So it's the 8th of March is the, the actual meeting, but I don't know how long it'll take, you know, how it's, they'll push it to get an implementation. So it, yeah, it could take.
Wearing an unofficial hat, I have been shadowing people in housing recently. I'm a little bit surprised at this because they started the implementation of the computer system in November, it's now been working for five weeks. So maybe the 2023 is by the time, because obviously the IT system you put in, even with the best planning in the world, isn't exactly the IT system you're still operating two or three years later. So I'm a little bit surprised at that because it was, I've been spoken, there's that many meetings, it was track of exactly which day. But I have spoken to the repair service since Christmas and it's been in operation for five weeks. Some of the things are working really well, some things have got teaching problems, but bearing in mind they've got people operating an IT system where they've always had paper systems before, so you've got people out in the field that have now got tablets and connectivity. And it's about, some of the things, it's going to be around training. They've had training, but it's real life training that they need to do so that they, they mark things off properly rather than just return, 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 which affects the collation of data. So I think when you get to a meeting, you'll find that it's already implemented. So I don't, I don't know what they've got as a 2023 date for that. So maybe that's the whole of the rebuild and the connectivity with customer service, which eventually all the different sides will speak to each other and they'll be self-served by housing tenants and various other people. So maybe it's the bringing together of all that. But various elements have already been, been implemented, including the customer service side and the repair side, but because it's so complex, they've not pushed them together straight away. So I hope that's helpful and I hope that's...
It sounds like some progress has been made and like I say, it's probably the full implementation is that date they've given rather than, like I said, it's probably going to be different, there's going to be different phases, different strands at the release at different times, so yeah, probably a lot of testing on it.
Okay, so the deep dive report comes on the 8th of March, did you say?
No, that's when the, that is when, yeah, the, the project lead's going to take it to the Performance and Delivery Board, so that's when they're going to be discussing it. So, so yeah, I should be able to, so the next time I bring this report will be June, so I can, I'll have that information, feedback from that, from that meeting then.
Okay, and when's our next report from you?
June, June 22, so yeah.
It's definitely a case that we'll all have to get back on this committee, won't we? That, that was all I wanted to ask. If, if there's any updates in between that you can bring us joy with an email, that would be very good. So apart from that, can, again, looking quickly for the recommendations. Making sure I've got it here.
Note the content of the report and then to agree to remove the five...
Yes, yes, we can because they are finally implemented. So thank you for sort of good and bad news, but again, if there's anything we can do to act as your, what's it, enforcer, do, see Simon's excited already, then we, you know, if there's anything we can do to add weight to what you're trying to do, then please do ask because, you know, this is really important that when internal audit reports and makes recommendations, that those are taken seriously by other departments because it's about what we're doing for the people of Sheffield out there. It's not about making you happy, it's about making things work for the people that we serve. Thank you very much Linda. Rapidly trying to find my next item, which is item 11 and it's the report from Birmingham City Council who came to look at our internal audit function. Carry on.
Yeah, thank you Chair. This is the report from the, the peer review, the independent review that the Birmingham City Council did on the audit service. The main point to note is from the recommendations is that they've actually rated us saying that we conform. Now, the word conform doesn't always give away a lot of details, but that was the highest possible accreditation we could get, so, so that was good news. But yeah, just to explain what the conform means. They, they got to that conclusion by interviewing a number of, a number of key officers, they reviewed responses from surveys and questionnaires and then they also looked at my self-assessment. So overall, there was 115, let's just give some statistics, there was 115 questions, we conformed in 89 of those, those areas, we partially complied with 14 and then there was 12 that weren't applicable to, to our internal audit. And so the good news was that they, they actually, the report they actually produced, they made eight recommendations and we agreed to all of them. I put implementation dates down for them all and the last implementation date will be the September 22 because a couple of the recommendations relate to my annual report that I bring to this committee. So even though it seems a long timeline, it's, it's when I bring the next report. But yeah, the overall feedback was that it was a well-established and embedded service and that we were trusted and valued and we were independent and objective. So yeah, some quite good praise in, in the report. So if anybody's got any questions?
Angela?
Just an observation, I was just looking at, because when I started reading it, I wrote next to, to it, I said, how are we going to ensure how our internal audit implements recommendations? And then the answer is just give lots of work to Linda because everything I think is you, isn't it, that's got to implement things. And I'm assuming that the ones that were sort of supposed to be implemented by the end of December and are now in place and it's just the ones that...
Sorry, there was three to be implemented by the end of December, two have been implemented already and then there was one about the declaration of endorsement, which is about, it was basically about where I sit in the, the organisation. Eugene has signed that off, I'm just waiting for the chief exec to sign that off. So that one's nearly been completed, but say it's, it's been produced, it's just waiting for a sign off on that one. And then yeah, as far as the review goes, I, obviously I have my updates with the head of strategic finance, I have regular one-to-ones with him. But what I will do is also once I've implemented all these, it'll start by September, I can then, when I bring the annual report, I can give feedback then as well that I should have actioned all of these, these, these recommendations as well to that, that committee. So you will get to know if I've actioned them all.
Right, just on page 285, consideration be given to the development of a governance and ethics audit universe. Yeah, what's, what's that?
Yeah, what they mean by, we have this, what they mean by an audit universe is, it could be, it could be a service, it could be an area, it could be a system, it's, it's what we call our universe, it's everything that we could possibly audit. So we have thousands of thousands of areas and systems, processes we could audit. So what they did suggest was if we refresh, because obviously ethics is quite a key area in governance, so they're just, when they looked at our big universe, they did suggest if we just refresh that and have a look at, you know, what can be put on our audit plan, particularly for next year and what's key. So, and we can link that in if we looked at our misregister, our corporate misregister as well. So we've got documents we can use to, to link that in. But also I put on there that I would have, we have core cities, what we call core cities, head of audit groups. So again, I can use, I can use that forum to see what other authorities use as their, as their audit universe, as we, as we call it.
Just to say, you have just touched on something where I have ribbed the audit team for a number of years about what the parameters of the audit universe are. So you've just touched on that. But, but seriously, I, the independent point earlier, you know, audit is not known, conform is actually a splendid endorsement of what is a small but effective audit team. So and thank you Angela for the points you're making there about, about the level of follow-up that Linda and the team do.
Just on that very one about the ethics, have you, is there enough time to actually put it in place by March? I just was surprised that it would take just a few months to implement, you know, changing completely or...
Yeah, no, that timeframe will be fine because we have, we have, to be fair, we have started to look at this, we've identified some areas that we, we can include already. So, so yeah, the, the March was fine and I put it in there because obviously I, we, I'll be bringing the audit plan for next year in April, so I needed it done really before, before I bring the plan to you. So yeah, that timeframe, it does seem tight, but it, yeah, it'll be fine.
Thank you. Congratulations on conforming and I think in answer to what Eugene asked, what are the parameters of the universe, I think it's infinity and beyond, isn't it? So yeah, we're really pleased about this report, so thank you. And our final report is our work programme report. And our final report is our work programme report, which we will now be having our February meeting due to not having had our December meeting. Is there anything that we need to add or take away from this?
Sorry, the housing, the housing ombudsman, we said.
So housing ombudsman for February. If, well, it has arrived, we just haven't. Yeah, because we're all part of one organisation, aren't we?
Yes, Chair, let's get it on the agenda and then I can always inform you if there's some reason why we can't bring it forward on that date. Thank you.
I'm finding, we'll set, Linda, I'm tracking it down.
Absolutely. Was there supposed to be something also about the continuing SEM plan? Which we've had, we've had people from education, have I missed it? I'm sure, had we finished asking about that?
I think they came to a committee towards the end of last year and reported. Is that members' recollection? I can't quite remember.
Whether they would do a return visit?
Don't think so, but it's up to you as a committee if you want them. Again, maybe see what the AGS report is this year and then take it from there perhaps.
With the addition of that, can we note this report and approve that's our work programme? So our next meeting will be on the 24th of February. And we'll have another exciting meeting. Thank you all very much for coming and staying till the end.